Good.
You're on.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting order for April 13th, 2022. We'll start with the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, warrants, bills, all signed up, aren't they?
Yep.
Approval of the agenda?
A motion that we approve the agenda.
No second.
All in favor? The minutes of the last meeting?
I will make the motion.
Um, six.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of the last meeting, which was April 6th.
Second.
In favor? Town administrator, weekly update?
All right, just a couple of items. First is a notice from your attorney, Burke and Clegg, letting you know that effective September 1st, the hourly rate is going to increase to $175 an hour. It's currently billed at 150. Next is a note-
See general counsel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, next is a notice from Wilson Lake Association that will hang up out there just indicating some volunteer work.
I'm sorry, could I go back? Did you say 150 to 195?
150 to 175. Twenty-five dollar increase.
It's still a pretty significant increase.
Shall we talk about options?
Have we, have we talked to him about this?
Sure.
I said, "Have we?"
Oh, no, no, I-
He just announced his rate increase?
He sent a generic letter, I'm assuming, to all of the towns that, because it-
How long were you down with him?
Indicates, um, I'm gonna say probably at least 10 years.
We all use them for certain things.
So we use him for general, right? We use Lenkowski primarily for all land use.
Yeah, I understand that primarily, land use. Okay. Maybe you could ask Michelle to give us an accounting on how much we spent with him?
Sure.
I think that's relevant.
And I'll let you know the last time he increased as well?
Yeah, 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 thank you.
To Wilson Lake.
I was making note of what I was supposed to do. Okay. Uh, okay, so they want you to know that on April 30th, the association is gonna be conducting a survey, and they're inviting you all to come. Sent it to you electronically. This is, they're indicating that you receive this because you own property in their area. So one of the town properties must be on or near Wilson Lake, or maybe-
Well, I mean, you got the rec fields right there. I don't know if that might have something to do with it. Run off to the lake, maybe?
It's just a, it's a generic letter that went out on, to everybody, that looking for volunteers for that-
Our roads and everything that border it, so, yeah, sort of talking about.
Uh, Sheriff's Department, so in your packet, you should have the call breakdown from the Sheriff's Department for the town of Acton. Let's go through our notable events. We made up for last month not having but one. We made it for that this month, or in March. Uh, first one is a motor vehicle crash in Shapley where the driver was just driving too fast and went into a tree. Uh, the next one, on March 8th, was deputies responded to a home on Sam Page Road for an emotionally disturbed individual that was taken to the hospital. Uh, next is an issue on Owl's Nest Road in Shapley that had some expired inspections and apparently outstanding warrants. On March 8th, there was, uh, they were dispatched to a home on Knox Road for domestic disturbance. Next was an OUI on Route 109, an Acton resident arrested on 109 in Acton for her second OUI. A medical call in Shapley for a 34-year-old that smoked too much marijuana and too many edibles at the same time. Um, March 14th, there, they were dis, they responded to a home on Fox's Ridge Road for a domestic argument involving, involving a boyfriend and girlfriend, and there was some threats of a firearm. Peace was restored. Uh, later in the same day, Deputy Frazier and a canine rebel, who's new to the York County Sheriff's Department, passed some training, so they're starting to incorporate canines. On March 17th, uh, there was a search warrant on a mobile device belonging to someone in Acton in regards to a sex crime investigation that's currently going on. On March 20th, deputies, uh, all of York County deputies participated in the remembrance of the Berwick Fire Captain, Mr. Barnes, who passed away in 2019. So it was just a notable event. On March 25th, on Goose Pond Road, um, there was, there was a felon with numerous firearms in his home. So those have been seized and they're handling it. On the 28th, the Sheriff's Department was dispatched to Shapley Corner Road, um, just north of the foot of the lake for a disturbance. Gentleman was arrested for stalking and outstanding warrants. Uh, he's accused of trying to run off his girlfriend off the road. And we'll leave it at that. I'm reading quickly and passing through names here, so bear with me. And the last one, um, was theft of tools from a home on Milton Mills Road in Acton that they're investigating.
What kind of tools?
Theft of tools.
Oh, I just said abducted.
Theft of-
Seems to be a lot longer than the last one you read.
I, well, last month, I, I really think we had two last month. So, yeah, so, um, so they're busy and that-
They're all out, right?
Hmm, that's what they're handling. That's all I have for tonight.
New deputy started?
He starts on Monday. And we will have him at a meeting to do a meet and greet, so we can put his face out there.
Good, thank you.
All set, David?
Okay. Okay, department head, community updates. See none? Okay, we'll go down to old business. A rec director.
Okay, so this is just a, um, kind of an FYI to update you on Tom and I's discussion. We had two, actually, as of late this afternoon. Tom, we now have three people that are interested in the position. So, uh, Tom and I will schedule something similar to what we did with the transfer station and, um, meet with them and report back with your, with his thoughts.
Audit bids.
So we emailed and sent the extra information out per your last meeting, and they're still available through, uh, April 20th, so.
Silent bids.
Not a single call so far.
How long's it been out?
Um, two weeks, two and a half weeks. So, we did run it in the newspaper, so we paid for that. I'll repost it a few places. See if I can get, maybe I can get codes to hand it out to contractors that come in.
Maybe, it might work.
So certainly if anybody knows of somebody looking for work, we'll keep pushing it.
New business, warrant recommendations.
Okay, so wanted to kind of talk to you about this process and where we're at. So, the warrant and finance did meet on Monday. They made all the recommendations, so their job is done. I'm assuming we don't make any changes to it, so thank you for that. At some point, we need to start going through the warrant articles and making recommendations. So you can do it one of two ways. You can take all of them home, you can take the art, take it home and just do one last read-through. We can, in the past, and not say you have to, but in the past, um, some board members have said, you know, "I want to talk about Article 8, 9, and 10," and then maybe make a motion on all of them as a group to approve as written. I mean, I'm gonna have to assume that's gonna be most of your recommendations, because you did write it. You know, and do them as a bulk, um, and then maybe vote on any that might have, um, different feelings on individually, so we don't have to go through them one by one. But, um, I've given you a fresh copy, so you can look at the warrant and finances recommendations, take it home. Next week, I really want to start making some recommendations.
I was, I was thinking about it today, and really, between the zoning, that's something that I think we probably ought to go through right here.
Absolutely.
But unless there's an issue with, you know, a single dot ones, I mean, we, we, it's our warrant.
Right.
But we need to take a vote on it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we can, we can do like a block vote on the whole thing, or we can pick out a couple here and there and vote on those.
I agree, you should definitely go through the zoning. But go through and read it. I mean, we've, you know, we've- When are you leaving?
Next.
Are you here next week?
I'm here next week, that's why I was saying, you know, we could take this home, look at it.
Because most of the stuff that's in here is pretty much generic stuff. It's just, you know, we had, we-
There were a few things we changed.
There's a few things that we might have some issues with, you know, but-
So we'll plan on trying to get through a majority of it next week anyways, so that you guys can-
When is the, uh, the last time that a new warrant could be suggested for the settlement to consider?
A new article?
Yes.
So, um-
I-
No, no, it's okay. I just want to make some understanding to answer it properly. I mean, technically, I mean, you, you set a doc, you set a guideline and a deadline schedule that you guys approved back in December that was about a week ago. Uh, I mean, the warrant and finances already met. If something came up, there's nothing to say we can't call and ask them to. It only has to be posted for seven to 10 days, but we've never waited that long.
What is the actual cutoff date?
It would be, um, seven days before the June 12th, uh, June 14th election.
Okay.
That's the legal get down to it.
And, and back up seven days for that, for, in order for it to go to the warrant finance?
No, so it has to be legally posted in the town for seven days.
I see, okay.
So.
So, basically, June 1st?
I feel like I'm breaking out in hives over here.
I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, in, in-
An issue that we haven't had a chance to talk about?
In emergencies, you can post a warrant in as little as seven days. It is strongly recommended for an annual town meeting that it's posted for as long as possible.
Okay.
Um, the voters really have a lot to read. We don't want it to look like we're posting it for the bare minimal, because it's an emergency.
I think there's plenty of time here, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Um, all right, so we'll plan on looking at that next week?
Yeah.
Let's see where it goes.
District 2 projects.
That time of year again?
So they all have copies of your three estimates, if you want to just go through them. I think Gadding Road is first?
Gadding Road, yep. I went down to Gadding Road, checked on my roads the other day. Uh, I went down the dirt side of Gadding Road. The water's washing onto the road. The ditch work is, just needs to be really ditched and send the water back where it's gotta go. And then I want to take some of the extra material out of there, fix some of the potholes for now, until we can get the grading set up, get the grader over there.
So this covers excavating, skid steer, truck, and some labor flagging, 2775, change. So Tom, just to catch you up, there's a, uh, a road commissioner ordinance that the town of Acton voted in. And in there, it clearly, it says that they have to present these estimates in advance for your approval.
Yeah, so that way we, we can set our work up for the week ahead.
Any concerns on that one?
When will it be done?
Uh, probably gonna start Monday, Tuesday next week.
All right, Baker Road?
Baker, just want to clean out the ditches right on the edge of Baker from Town Farm, washing out past couple of years. I want to get that back together, get those culverts cleaned out that are in there to send it back across Milton Mills.
7:14, concerns? So Lebanon Road?
Lebanon Road, we had an ice, major ice issue this year. Uh, we had to dig up, we had to bring an excavator down there. We had about four inches of ice from overflow of one of the ditches. So, it was a partial culvert that was left in on an edge that we ended up ripping out. And I want to get that back in, get the ditch where it needs to be, and so that way we don't have this issue next winter.
All right, so we need to take one set, whoever has one set, you need to initial each one of them, because we need to be able to attach it to payroll and prove to the auditor that we followed policy.
Yeah, I just picked up a sweeper today, so I gotta go get the brushes for it tomorrow. And get it back together and get sweeping the roads, hopefully Saturday. I'm planning on starting on Saturday. Start right in my neighborhood, start with the bridge and work my way that way through town.
Canal Bridge?
Yep, get that swept, and then once I'm swept, I want to wash it off and bring my tank down there and get some fresh water on it and get it all cleaned off and keep it in good shape.
So Tom's the only one that signed all three?
Oh, there's three of them.
Nothing in District 1 for this?
No.
You have any upcoming projects? No, he didn't present anything?
Yeah, just maintenance, yeah.
Time I'll just step to the next one.
He's hanging around for the next one. He's hanging around for the next item.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, okay, we're gonna go to Flat Ground Road.
So Adam came to me, um, earlier and basically said that he was out of money in Flat Ground Road. According to the treasurer, there's 220, $228.44 left, and he's looking for a direction on spring cleanup.
Grading and stuff like that.
He spoke to Michelle about the article. It says 5,000, so he doesn't know what, how you guys want to handle it.
So we used it for plowing, which is maintenance of the road. Uh, we use straight sand on that road. You know, I really didn't charge what was done down there, was, you know, a little here, a little there to, for Adam maintaining the road for him. You know, I tried to keep it as low as possible with those guys and do the right maintenance on the road for the winter. So my understanding, that's how we were supposed to do it.
Obviously, it was last fall, too, the grade was last fall.
Yes, the grading last fall, because we did it after everything.
So there was a, a, a specific warrant for $5,000 to maintain this road. Uh, it's, it's now fully expended?
Just about. We have a couple hundred dollars left.
Couple hundred dollars.
Which I could go down if there's potholes. I haven't been down the road to see what the potholes are like, but I can get down there with a little bit of that and get those filled in and stuff like that.
And so we're not in a position where we can authorize any further expenditures on this?
Not without a special town meeting. Let me pull up the R.
And then I can wait until after town meeting and then have it regraded again.
Okay.
Or whatever work needs down there.
I guess probably if you only got 200-some dollars left in that account, then probably, um, go down there with some gravel, fill some potholes, just get it to July 1st.
Yep.
But what about, I guess, I guess we're gonna say this.
Let me read it.
How do we change that 5,000 if, are we gonna need to add more money to maintain this road? This is what I'm saying. It's not something we can just do, right?
Right, and now would be the time, if necessary.
It's a new warrant each year? It's not done by contract, or?
Yeah, I'd have to look at the agreement. I don't think the agreement says anything about the monetary in it. I'd have to look at the agreement. I have to, so we have an agreement that lays out what we need to do. I don't know if that agreement has a number on it, so before I'd answer that, I'd want to pull it.
We're gonna know everything that's going up, so.
Correct.
Yeah, and it is, I mean- Depending on what the agreement says, you could change this article if you needed to. We'd have to call warrant finance back to make a different recommendation, but-
Would they approve it as, as it stands?
Yes. Have we norm, have we run out of money in the past? Do we normally not grade until after July 1?
No, just I happened getting scheduling and stuff last year. I wasn't able to get Jeff over there to get it graded. I don't know, in the past, well, I, the first year I was in, I didn't know about, you know, how everything worked and the warrant was. It was a learning curve for me, the first one I got appointed. And then it was my understanding, you know, we're doing maintenance on the road. It shouldn't be coming out of my snow budget. They have a special budget for it, so that's what I did, you know. Every time we'd have a significant snowstorm, I'd add a little bit, you know, what needed to be added to my payroll and that way Michelle knew.
Is there any safety issues here?
I don't think so. I haven't been down there. I gotta go look.
When I pull the contract, too.
Is that a reasonable, does it understand if there are safety issues here or not? If there are any, it seems to me it's pretty obvious.
Yeah, I mean, that's why he's gotta go down and see.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to drive that road yet.
And, um, I don't know, like-
Yeah, why don't we report back next week, and we'll pull the contract as well, and you guys can think about whether or not you want to increase that number.
Yeah, I just want to get ahead of it, so we're, everybody's on the same page and everybody knows what's going on. All right, thank you, guys.
Transfer station.
That you?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, what we've got, um, our supervisor, I spoke to him, he wasn't able to be here tonight. So, what it is, is, um, they haven't got the brush and the chips and all that. They need to get the brush chipped up to the transfer station. And, uh, Will, you, you've been working with Bob, with the chip company. So unfortunately, the price of the chipping has gone up, and he's gotten some prices. One price, he's gotten one price so far, and after talking to him today, um, we were, he was hoping we were gonna be able to sign the contract to it, but I, I'd like to hold off a week. And I gave him three other companies a call. I'd like to have more than just one price, because the price that we got quadrupled the, what we normally, we normally spend, so, um-
So this is kind of twofold, just to catch you up. So, the transfer station is on there, because the board has past practice. If a department is going to spend outside of a regular line for something, the board has indicated to me that they want to know that in advance. So, if I have run out of my supplies line and I need to take it out of tax billing, you want to know that before. So, let's just say it ends up being a $15,000 job. He doesn't have $15,000 in that line. So, the original reason that it was on here is so that you guys could vote to approve, um, what Michelle has presented to you with forecasted balances, for her to take little amounts out of all these different lines to come up with a 15,000. So that was the first part of the motion. But David kind of tied the next item as well together, because it's, the logging proposal is on there.
Well, yeah, because when he called me about, you know, say, say a proposed $15,000, we don't have a line in here for that. And so, he met with Michelle, see if we had any extra money anywhere, and they come up around $28,000. Hypothetically, you know, that's roughly what they should have at the end of the year, because we had one employee that, well, we hadn't had the fourth employee for quite a while.
Salary savings?
Salary savings and a couple of other things. So, he wanted to, you know, he wanted to know whether or not we could, you know, if we would approve taking out of these lines. It's, it's all the same.
Yeah.
You know, as long as the bottom number's the same.
But you have a concern with the, uh-
The only concern I have is-
The bid on there, or the cost on this?
I mean, if it was a, you know, you know, because when I was road commissioner, I think it was 3,500 bucks. He used to, you know, do me, and then they go up to him for 35, it was some 1,000 bucks. And this price is a lot more than that. So I would feel more comfortable, um, seeing him, seeing if he could at least call the three individuals that I told him to call.
You said you just gave him some names?
I gave him three other names to call and, you know, and at least get an idea. If they don't give a price, then, you know, we're stuck with what we got. But I'd, I'd really like to see a couple more prices before we, we do this, because we're talking a lot of money here, so.
So I'll give you a chance to, if you follow that direction, to look at these forecasted balances and make sure that you don't have any concerns on, because according to sheet, and according to the way the treasurer's put it together, about 28,000 will be the forecasted balance out of the transfer station come June 30th. So the money would come out of a combination of those things.
Okay.
Okay, so we're, the log proposal, so I guess we've already discussed that. Liquor license application?
All right, so you have, um, in front of you, just the front page. So, liquor licenses in the state of Maine are required to come before the town. More for, it depends. If it's a year-round or a, a permanent structure, they're required unless the board votes otherwise to have a public hearing yearly to hear concerns. This particular one is a catered application, so it's a one-day event, a wedding venue at Blueberry Hill. Um, we've confirmed from the state before that really it's more informational for you to let you know what's gonna happen. They're licensed by the state. The state oversees everything through the beverages and lottery operation. Um, but there's an application here if you look at. Their liability insurance is here, and they've paid your required fee.
Is this the first time they've done this?
No, this, this company's been for us numerous times.
Okay. No history here that-
Not that I'm aware of. And again, the state really, I mean, if, if there were concerns.
The state would be all over it.
So you can look, I only, I think, no, no, I copied both pages for you, so.
Yeah, you did.
Do you need to make a motion?
Yes.
Cruisin' Infusions, huh?
You guys all set?
Yeah.
So, make a motion that we accept the liquor license application from Cruisin' Infusions.
Just say the date for the record?
Yeah. 4/30.
Date of event, 4/30/22.
Second?
All in favor? Okay, we're gonna go down to policies.
So I thought it was time for us to get back on track, now that everybody had their time away. I've left you with, um, three new policies. The first one is the acceptance of payments. The next one is appointments and reappointment policy. And the next is access to public meeting policy. So these are all last reviewed or adopted in 2019. So I'm asking that you go through them and look at them. Next week, we'll go through them line by line, make any changes, and hopefully prepare them for an updated signature with your recommendations.
Sort of an immediate comment, a question. These, these cash payments, um, it looks like it's, uh, tax, uh, excuse me, the rec department, land use department, and fire rescue department. Is it necessary that all those locations actually take cash, or can they be, um-
So the rec department-
Can we have them, I understand the rec, it's, you know, your parents and so on, but thinking land use department right in the building, why are they taking cash?
They're not. So they have to, they send them up. That's why one of the recommendations I'm gonna say is the third paragraph down where it says, "It is preferred, is required that all cash payments." So when they, someone comes in with cash downstairs, they bring them up for a receipt on the spot.
Okay.
So.
By cash, you mean check, cash, whatever?
Well, check, check, it's generally cash, because a check, they can, it is payable, already made out to the town of Acton. Um, they bring them up daily anyways. But we can word it in such a sense, I mean, the auditors in past practice have, would like every single person to leave with a receipt. If you come in this building with any form of money, you leave with a receipt. Uh, they don't want any department taking money at all.
No, I wouldn't either.
Yeah.
And, and I would say just not cash, but any form of payment.
I think it just, I mean, this-
Have it all done here.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can change the line to say this pertains to all departments.
At least for land use, I don't know about the rec.
I mean, the, the, um-
Rec, you got like the little shack there with the food, stuff like that, you gotta have cash for that.
Uh, fire department is what, permits and things?
No, there's no fee for permits. So I, I was just trying to think of a, a reason that they would take any money, so I don't think they would. So we can change it to say this includes all departments of the town of Acton.
Okay.
You know, something like that.
I think we oughta just close it down, and as much as possible have everything handled there.
Okay.
Probably, uh, you're the liaison to the fire department?
No, I am.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Okay, has worked, has any people paid the payments for the ambulance or anything like that?
No, I mean, even donations come through us.
Okay.
You know, but I'll double-check with them.
Okay.
Okay.
So we got our homework. Okay, we're gonna, executive session.
You want to do public comment first, or?
Oh, yeah, yeah, why don't we do that? Got public comment? Public comment?
Oh.
Okay. Um, I'm Bernard Broder. I live on Lake Shore Drive. Couple things quickly, um, I just wanted to comment on. As you all know, I am an attorney, and I just wanted to say that I think the $175 an hour is actually quite reasonable, uh, in today's standards. So, yeah, I don't, I don't disagree that you should do due diligence.
I would agree, it's just a rate of increase.
Yeah, yeah. And, and you know, for, for those at home listening, you know, um, more times than not, the services requested of an attorney are for less than an hour. So, and they're billed at one-tenth of an hour increment. So, you know, quick call to the attorney, say it's less than 10 minutes. That's $17.50 that you're likely to be billed, so, um, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, the other thing I just wanted to bring to the board's attention before you vote on the warrant article related to rentals. I know there was some concern, at least by some board members, on the issue of, um, insurance, requiring certificates of insurance. I'm not clear whether the issue was requiring those, period, or whether the issue was asking for a, the town to be named as a certificate holder.
That was the issue, the second part.
That's the issue? Okay, fine, then I will, what's that?
I'll pipe up. I'm, I quite frankly don't understand even asking for it, but-
Okay, well-
That's fine, but I, I understand they've approved it, so I'll deal with it.
Yep, well, yeah, let me, I'll just say quickly, the, I was the one that proposed the town, uh, being a certificate holder. And that was based on my experience in the insurance industry, which is if you're a certificate holder and the insurance gets canceled, you get notice of it. So then you would know this person is no longer insured. If you just get a certificate of insurance, you know they have insurance at that moment. If you just get a certificate of insurance, you know they have insurance at that moment. Um, and, you know, we do request, the town requests certificates of insurance in other instances, like conditional use permits, the matter that was just before you tonight. Um, so I just wanted to mention that, you know, for you to maybe think about that consideration. Um, okay. So, those were not the reasons I got up to speak. Um, as the board knows, I was elected to the Warrant and Finance Committee last June, and I resigned, uh, this past fall after, I don't know, a couple of meetings? And the reason that I resigned was because before the board, uh, the committee, excuse me, was an issue that related to a, a proposed warrant article, proposed by the planning board. And I served on the planning board. And so, it was requested that I recuse myself from the matter because other members on the Warrant Finance Committee believed that I had a conflict of interest. Um, so, they did not request that I resign. However, I chose to resign, and in my resignation, I cited for the select board that I believed, um, and I still believe, that the town is best served when committee and board members participating on their, on the respective committee or board can participate fully, um, and not be in these potential conflicts of interest. Um, after this Monday's Warrant Finance Committee meeting, um, which I had a number of concerns about, and I'll get into those in a minute, um, I, I read, uh, the Maine Municipal Association guidelines related to conflicts of interest. And of course, I'm sure we're all aware that on any committee or board that one serves on, you can have a personal conflict of interest, like maybe the issue involves a family member or something that's gonna affect people on the street that you live on and so forth. But there's also, in the Maine Municipal, um, guidelines, the concept called incompatible positions. And what it says in that is incompatible positions may exist when the duties of each are so inconsistent or conflicting that one person would not be able to perform the duties of each with undivided loyalty. And, um, it also cites case law, Howard v. Harrington, which is a Maine case, which is citing King v. Tizzard. Um, and the holding in that is, in King v. Tizzard, two offices are incompatible when the holder cannot, in every instance, discharge the duties of each. So my concern that I'm bringing to the select board is, um, obviously, warrant finance are elected positions. A lot of, uh, the other committees and boards are appointed. And so I, uh, am asked, I'm not expecting any response from you or commitment, but I'm suggesting that you might want to consider these issues in making future appointments. Um, I know it's difficult in a small town, anywhere really, to get people to volunteer their time, um, but the pool is more limited in a small town. But despite that, um, because one of the dangers that's cited in the Maine Municipal, um, materials are that if you allow these potentially incompatible positions to exist, and an individual in that situation makes a decision, participates in a vote, you leave yourself open to having the legitimacy of that vote litigated. So, it is something that we should, I think, think about. So, uh, again, I attended the Warrant Finance Committee meeting Monday, um, you know, and it... I'm not gonna say it occurred to me at that meeting, it occurred to me before that meeting. Uh, we have the Chair of the Road Committee on Warrant Finance, Chair of the Capital Improvement Committee on Warrant Finance. Um, they did not recuse themselves from any issues related to their other committee work. There were what I would consider a number of potential personal conflicts, dealing with budgets for departments where a family member might be employed, um, roadwork on roads where I believe at least one member resides. Um, and, and basing votes, by all appearances, I don't know why people vote the way they do, but, um, some of the funding for social service agencies, I don't know whether board members were given, um, any documents from these agencies outlining the basis for their request. Um, but what I do know from observing the meeting is that in one instance, there was a request for a, I'm assuming it's probably like a visiting nurse agency, it was a nursing agency, and one board member, um, discouraged people from voting based on, I don't know if it's even a personal experience or something that that board member had heard from someone about the, um, criteria to receive services from that agency. You know, again, I don't know if they had materials, but sitting in the audience, I'm thinking, well, number one, do we even know if that's accurate, that that's what that agency does or doesn't do? Number two, if that is what that agency did in the past, we don't know that they still do it. But across the board, that was, uh, you know, no one voted in favor of giving that agency money. Um, and for me, it appeared to be someone's personal experience or personal opinion. Um, for anyone who wa, might watch the tape of the meeting, there was one warrant article that came up, and there were six people voting, and the vote was three to three. It's a tie. And so the Chair announced initially erroneously that there would be another vote because the votes were going to be unanimous, or they weren't, you know, gonna go, go forward, gonna move on. And so I spoke up at that point as a point of order and said, you know, "I don't understand this." And then it was corrected that the votes didn't need to be unanimous, but they were going to be a majority vote, one way or the other. Either ought to pass or not pass, or they were gonna continue to deliberate. Well, I feel that the purpose of having Warrant Finance, um, is really diluted, if not destroyed, by that process. And here's why. Because as a voter, if I'm not educated on a warrant article, I'm relying on Warrant Finance recommendations, and I'm relying on the select board's recommendations. And so if the real issue, the real, the real genuine, this is my mind on this, is tied, then I'm probably gonna ask more questions at the town meeting. If it's unanimous, or if it's, you know, majority, probably less questions. Um, but it's also not the genuine opinion of those people voting. And, you know, there were other things that concerned me this past year similar to that, where the committee appeared to be trying to align what their vote was gonna be with what your vote's gonna be. You know, there were instances where there were representations made to you as a board, "This is the way I think it's gonna go, I could probably get them to do this if you do that." Again, as a voter at the town meeting, I don't need the Warrant Finance to necessarily agree with the select board. If they do, you know, yes, that's, that's great, that tells me the recommendation is consistent. Uh, but I don't think that should necessarily be an objective. And I also think that there's a danger here with saying we're gonna have a majority vote and having people on multiple committees that I talked about earlier. Because then, frankly, I'm not saying this is going on, but then I think it begs the question, are you gonna vote what you really believe is best? Or is, are there gonna be trade-offs here? You know, I'm the Chair of this committee, and I want X, and you're the Chair of that committee, and you want that, and, you know, we're not gonna be necessarily voting what we really think because it's gonna be a majority vote, or it's not gonna go forward. So tell you what, you give me this one, I'll give you that one, and so forth. And again, I'm not saying that's what's going on, but I think it begs the question. You know, this is all about, not necessarily impropriety, but the appearance of impropriety, or the po, the prospect of that. So, I also think that's another reason to follow the Maine Municipal recommendations and to consider incompatible positions in making appointments. Um, so, the last thing I wanna say on this is, um, 'cause I don't anticipate what I've said tonight to be popular with everyone, maybe not with anyone. But if there's speculation that this is sour grapes on my part, um, because I was asked to recuse myself, and because I resigned, and because I wanted an ordinance to go a certain way, um, first of all, I will tell you that's simply not true. And secondly, um, before the proposed moratorium ordinance went to vote, I did a significant amount of research on the planning board's, uh, the parameters of the authority of the planning board. And I reached the conclusion that I felt the town would be fine either way because the planning board has more inherent authority than I knew of. And so, not only did I have that realization, but I made a point of having a conversation with Tom and Kathy McGurty the weekend before the vote for this very reason. So that there are people that knew what my conclusions were, what my positions were, before that vote ever happened. So, um, my motivations are simply that I don't think this is good practice. Um, I think that it concentrates too much power within the town, within very few people. Um, and I think that in terms of this year's, uh, recommendations for Warrant Finance, that unfortunately, they've been, in my opinion, very much diluted, if not are meaningless. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Throughout the whole process of the budget for the Warrant Finance Committee, uh, there has been disagreements. I say disagreements, conversations, um, deliberations between the Board of the Slutmen, uh, what they believed, what they were gonna move forward. Uh, there was with the Fire Department, there was with the Roads. Uh, some of the things that, uh, came from the Warrant Finance Committee, uh, the Slutmen didn't agree with. And at the end of the day, um, everybody had an opportunity, uh, to speak out on any concerns, uh, and talking to the departments through the process. Uh, they were more than willing to settle for what the Board of Slutmen, um, put forward. So, the Warrant Finance Committee didn't just go with what the Slutmen said. There was a lot of meetings, a lot of workshops, and a lot of conversations with everybody. Um, I assume, um, well, first off, the other day, I, I, and I always let everybody speak, I let, and I've always let everybody from the public speak. And when Mr. Broder spoke up the other night, uh, when I misspoke and used the word unanimous, and I meant majority, uh, I had no issue with that, it's a procedural thing. Uh, but I do have the right, as Chairman, to, under robust rules, to ask that we're gonna revisit this so that we have a majority vote, one way or the other. And the thing is, with the Warrant Finance Committee, the way the Warrant Finance Committee operates is either guidance under the ordinance, or it's the way everybody on the committee has agreed that this is the way, uh, the Warrant Finance Committee operates. I understand the appointments, uh, Bernie's concerns, but the three people he was particularly talking about, uh, were elected by the town meeting. And I'm not gonna talk about the other two, but I'll talk about myself. 'Cause that, I am one of the people he is talking about. Uh, for conflict of interest because of financial gain, 'cause I'm related to somebody. And the only one that comes to mind is, uh, my granddaughter for the four or five hundred dollars a year that she's getting out of the fight about. If, when that vote came up, if it was an issue, Mr. Broder could have brought it up, and I would have gladly recused myself. I have done that before, uh, when I was on the planning board, uh, for even distant relatives. But there is no bias, as implied, on the, uh, quick, broke quote on the, on the planning board, I mean, on the Warrant Finance, that if you give me this, I'll do that. I mean, that is to attack the integrity of elected officials and appointed officials, I think is wrong, to even imply that. Now, the truth of the matter is, I have five or six relatives that work at the school. Marietton, that works at the library, is a relative of mine. Um, in the past, when David was Road Commissioner, uh, my son worked for the town. When people elect me, um, I've been around enough now that people know who they're electing. And the town meeting elected me to do what I did this year because I've been doing the same thing every year. So they already know what I'm doing and my feelings. So, I'm very disappointed that any concerns about the Warrant Finance Committee wasn't brought up prior to or during the Warrant Finance meeting because every member has an opportunity to, to, uh, in the public, in every department, to voice their opinions or concerns about something. Thank you.
I just wanna let everybody know, they started surveying today on West Shore Drive. So they got all their points and everything, and they'll be back next week to finish up, so...
I understand that.
So, um, so just, everybody knows.
Anybody else?
Okay, I guess, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion that we go into Executive Session 405-6A1.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're on.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion that come out of Executive Session 405-6, or 405-6A1 at, what time is it?
Second.
Seven.
It is 7:43.
7:40.
Second.
All in favor? Announcements, April 14th, Planning Board Workshop at 6:00 PM. April 18th, Warrant Finance, 6:00 PM. Did the Warrant Finance feel a nice...
Yeah, that will be canceled, yes, yes.
That would be canceled, okay. So there will not be a meeting on the 18th for Warrant Finance. April 20th, Select Board, 6:00 PM. April 21st, Planning Board, 6:00 PM. April 27th, Select Board, 6:00 PM. And April 28th, Planning Board Workshop, 6:00 PM. Okay, you got anything, any announcements or anything?
No.
No?
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Thanks.
Good night, everybody.
Okay, good night.